Next item, please.
Special reports, transportation, Mr. Thomas Wall, Mr. Mark Andrews, and Mr. Ricardo Sotres. Let me get my mask.
All right. Good evening, everybody. President McDonald, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Malakal. You get to see Mr. Amal often, so I want to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Sotres. He does a lot of work behind the scenes, but he's our transportation supervisor. And he's put a lot of work into the report that we're going to be talking about. Yeah, how many years do you have in a department?
One and nine years.
There's a lot of institutional knowledge between those years, let me tell you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So I just wanted to start off by giving a little bit of background information. So how did we get to where we're at right now? There's three main historical events that took place that really started to make it challenging for not just us, but for all the school districts with recruiting. And today, we're looking at just transportation, but this goes across the whole board. The first one was, and you know, we went through the recession, so the state cut a lot of our funding in 2009. The second one was when the state adjusted the retirement plans. And the third one is during the years after that with the increase in minimum wages. Those are, there's a lot of things that have gone into it. Those are the three main ones that have really made it difficult for us to retain bus drivers and recruit over the years. In 2009, we brought in a consultant to look at our operations and to see how we could be more efficient. Just again, looking at transportation, some of those suggestions that they gave were filling our buses up more, which we'll get into a little bit later in this presentation caught up to us. It was good at the time, but it caught up to us because one of the good things that we had in the district, our enrollment kept expanding. So another one was cutting full-time drivers. So this kind of just gives you a snapshot before the consultant suggestions and what we did after. The key information to look at here is that we went from eighty total bus routes down to seventy-three, and we went from twenty-one full-time bus drivers down to eight. These are some other factors gone into making it hard to recruit. You got to have a clean driving and criminal history record. Starting in July of 2010, you no longer could be insulin dependent to be, you could be grandfathered in, but any new driver coming into the industry, they couldn't be dependent on insulin. So our pool of candidates started to shrink with these extra requirements and hurdles that a driver would have to go through in order to become a commercial driver. Looking at, and then just wanted to put this one out there because this is a big one when we interview drivers. We really are telling them that they have to be available for eleven hours, when most of the time they're only getting paid for six hours. And that's because the nature of transportation, you bring students in, then you go home or you take a break, and then you take, bring, take students home in the afternoon. Looking at the last five years, because of all the recruiting challenges we've had, we've had to look at the last column that gives you a really good idea of how in two south, in seventeen eighteen, we went from about one point four million dollars in contracted services up to three point one million over this last year that we just went through. Did I steal your thunder, Tom? Thomas, let me go back. I'm sorry. Thomas a little bit.
That's right. The state of Michigan requires us to fill out a transportation cost report every year. So that is the, oh, going the wrong way. So that is the total transportation cost. That is regular ed and special ed. Now, the state reimburses us a little over seventy percent for our special ed costs. So that's where you see that third column where we get reimbursed for our special ed side because it's a requirement by law. So our new, our net transportation cost is what it is. And you'll see that COVID had an impact, you know, that where it went up in eighteen nineteen, but nineteen twenty, you can see where it started going down in twenty twenty-one, it also went down. So that's because of the COVID impact. So that's why you see that numbers rise and then go back down. But the net contracted costs on the right-hand side is part of those numbers. And that's what we're talking about today is that we don't have enough drivers, so we've had to contract over the years to supply those routes. So again, this just shows you the history. So you can see the number of bus routes were up to eighty at this point. And that's because our, our number of students driving and our special ed riders. So that's why the number had driven over the years. And you can see that the number of contractor routes has also risen because obviously it's been hard for us to recruit drivers. So the contracted portion is, is in comparison to the increase in contracted costs. So the financial cost, as you can see here, you know, a seventy-two passenger bus, we went out for, looking at numbers recently, is all the way up to a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars for a wheelchair bus, a hundred three thousand for a regular bus. If you remember, not more than five, six years ago, we were at, you know, low nineties to a hundred and five, but those costs have rise with the rate of inflation. The cost for our first year maintenance obviously is much lower than a bus after seven years. And we keep buses, what, well over like twelve, thirteen years? So our lives, we, we, since we have our own mechanic staff, they do a very good job. And so we're maintaining buses longer. But again, at some point, that maintenance cost gets to be exorbitant. On the driver's side, now, the number looks large, but this is total compensation. So includes benefits, includes FICA, includes retirement. You know, just FICA retirement these days is fifty percent of the cost of the salaries. In addition, you know, we have overtime. So when we're short-staffed, you know, some drivers will be doing double runs. They have, you know, field trips and athletic events at, after their normal route day. All that is based on overtime. So that's why those numbers look larger because it's based upon the total compensation for a mechanic anywhere from a hundred to a hundred ten, and a bus driver from ninety-five to a hundred and three. Now, what are the needs? As you can see here, that we're forecasting for the twenty-two, twenty-three, again, eighty general routes for this upcoming year, thirty-seven general ed buses, and forty-three special ed buses. Now, by law, we have to provide the special ed buses. That's a requirement by law. So that is not something we could reduce or eliminate by any means. And so right now, our transportation firm has fifty-five bus drivers and fourteen bus attendants, and with forty-eight regular buses and twenty-one. So if we decide to go forward and want to bring this in-house fully, it's not something we can do overnight. There's just not enough drivers out there to hire to bring on. And that doesn't matter if we offer higher rates. It's still going to take time for that process. So without the assistance for a vendor, we don't have enough to accommodate our needs if we don't have a third party work with us for this upcoming year. So what would happen, we would have to start looking at reducing regular runs because that is not what's required by law. That's the only alternative we would have if we don't have a third party come in and help us. And that's basically it. So we're open for questions as the board wishes.
Trustee Thorpe.
So if I'm seeing the numbers right, when you say eighty routes, each driver can do one, more than one route, correct? And we've got fifty-five drivers. So fifty-five drivers can't cover eighty routes?
Correct. So that's when, to make up the difference, that's when we bring in a supplemental or a contractor to make up the supplemental, or supplemental transportation, a contractor.
So is that difference that twenty-five really the, the difference? Because I thought you said that multiple routes can be done by one driver.
Well, one, one driver's doing a tier, high school, middle school, elementary. So that's one route.
That's one route. That's not three routes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what you need is, the route is the, the three.
And, and just for the clarification, we do a three-tier process. So we have different times for the high school kids, a different time for the middle school kids, different times for the elementary kids. So we stagger it anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes apart. So they can do the first part, move to the next one, and to the next one. So that reduces the number of drivers we need and buses. So that's why we do a three-tier system. It's more efficient and money-wise and for staffing.
Trustee Petchakop.
Okay, number one, I have to take credit for the fact that I was on the board in two thousand and nine when we started to cause a problem. And that's because we were in a perfect recession and didn't have money. And we had to protect the inner circle of educating the students, and that was on the outer circle of needs at that time. So we had to find a way to balance our budget, which was required by law. But the conversation was had back then. Do we eliminate general ed busing altogether to save money? And we, as a board, felt that that also would impact the education of our students because we knew a lot of them would probably disappear from our system because they wouldn't have a way, a reliable way to get to school regularly. So we made that commitment that we would make every effort to maintain some kind of general ed busing. It appears now that not only have we, I'm assuming, I can't remember what, I'd have to look back at the dates, of what it looked like with the special ed busing back then, that that has also grown quite a bit?
It has. That's correct. We could get those numbers. We could, if you'd like to put it as a request, we could get those numbers for you.
The, the fact is, is that my, my concern is not only that we try to find a way to balance this and contracting out was never our, our first ask, but we didn't, we didn't have an option back then. And we currently don't have one really now that's a, a reliable way because we can't continue to wait on, on getting bus drivers. My concern is, is that we, we pulled an item recently off the agenda about contracting with our outside contractors to wait because we had questions and concerns. But in the meantime, other districts are also scrambling and competing with those resources as well. Are we getting to a point where we won't even have to make this decision because it's going to be made for us, basically, because we just won't have the availability of buses?
I, I would have to concur with you on that.
That's what I'm beginning to think of. Every time we decide that we want to hold off and wait, we put ourselves in a position of competing with other districts who are moving forward, and we're compromising our ability.
Correct. And we actually have been working with HR. We advertise for bus drivers year-round. So every time we get bus drivers, you know, we go through the process and interview them. So it's not like we're going haphazardly out there. We're constantly doing advertising for open positions year-round. Because we would rather hire the staff ourselves, go through our training process, and you know, be accountable directly to us. But we just don't, there's just not availability of people looking to drive a bus for a variety of reasons.
And I'm not even certain we have the buses available to put them in, even if we were to hire them necessarily to cover those routes either.
Right. And getting a bus even before the pandemic took, you know, four to six months. It's not something they just have on the shelf. It's something they have to create and build and get into the cycle because they're not carrying the inventory like they used to.
So what's the lag time now?
I don't, for a bus?
For a bus.
We have some buses that are seventeen years old. So, but we've lost a lot of those because we've tried to maintain and we, we kept a fleet larger than what we really should have because our efforts were to eventually try to take, you know, routes back. But we just were never able to get the, the driver piece there. Over these last two or three years with the escalation of parts, we've had to let some of our buses just go because it doesn't, it's not justifiable to spend twelve thousand dollars on, let's say, to rebuild a turbo and some engine work on a bus. If we were to, even with that work, we would turn it around and sell it and only get maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. So in a new bus right now, they're saying ten to twelve months.
Ten to twelve months. Okay, so double, basically.
Right. And I can tell you from my, my, my recent experience with HVAC, mechanical equipment, that could easily be pushed out even further once we put to order. Yeah, we do have an agenda item on today that we found three used buses. So that's going to help.
And they're specialized buses. Trustee Watts?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go on.
So then a couple of questions. So the third-party bus companies, can we, do they provide the bus driver and the bus, or can they just do one or is it a package deal?
They can do both. And we transitioned to that a little bit last year. We were starting to move into that route. But because we don't have enough special ed wheelchair lift buses, we had to have them do the one piece where they do the driver, or I should say, I, to be correct, I should say the bus staff and the bus.
Okay. And then the second question, I have two more. So the second question is for the bus drivers, what is the turnaround from the time that they apply to the time that they, that are hired?
If someone comes into our office with just a regular driver's license, to get them behind a bus could take, trained, could take four to six weeks easily.
If they already have a CDO.
If they already have a CDO and they're all certified, got all their qualifications, we still run them through our trainers. I make them take a road test just for the liability of our district to make sure everything is clear. But that could take two to three weeks.
Okay. And then the last question I have is that are we seeing the third-party companies, are they having staffing issues?
And the answer to that is yes. You know, they're having the same trouble because the, the quantity availability is higher than the demand. We just recently went through and tried to rebid this again. And so I reached out to a vendor. It's like First Student, that's a national company, you would think has all sorts of resources. I've used them back in the nineties. And they said, no, it's going to take us anywhere from four to six months to gear up for a new client. And that's what they're saying, just because they would have to get all the bus drivers and the buses in place before they could actually take out a new contract.
Okay. So then the other question is, looking ahead, is there anything in terms of our recruitment that we could be doing or should be doing that would persuade those who are going from a third company directly to us?
Well, typically, a lot of times when you work with a third company, they have language in the contract that they don't want you to steal their employees. So you would have to actually typically wait to act your contract expanded in some period of time after that. Otherwise, they'd be afraid that you would hire their employees and they'd be out of business.
I guess, is there anything that they're doing that would be best practice that we're not like, why would be, why would individuals go to a third party versus directly to a school district?
Well, typically, they pay slightly higher than us.
Okay.
Because they don't have that fifty percent, you know, FICA in retirement. They have the FICA at seven point six five. It's another forty-two to forty-three percent retirement cost that we pay as part of the cost. So we cannot compete with them on a straight wage-to-wage scale.
Okay. So that's something, it's a salary that is.
Even though we even have better benefits at a lower cost, it's the retirement that really makes us hard to compete.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I, I could expand on that, too. So since we haven't contracted everything out, there are school districts back in two thousand and nine that did just to save money. Since they're committed and they have no choice to contract out, those contractors can go to the district and say, if you want us to recruit, you're going to have to allow us to pay our drivers more. So what happens is when we try to raise our salaries for our drivers, the contractors just stay right above us.
I see. Okay.
Trustee Mazen?
I have two questions. If you can go back to slide three. So you mentioned.
I don't, I'm sorry, trustee.
Uh, no, the background slide. I think it's, wait, yeah, this one. So back in two thousand and nine, we had, you said a consultation firm that came and, and kind of studied for efficiency. Was that at the time when we were looking for?
It was, and it was all staffing. It wasn't just the buses. It was everybody.
I see that we went from twenty-one drivers full-time to right now eight, but the routes were not much of a difference. We have.
Because we had all part-time.
I understand. Eighty and then seventy-three, and then the, the part-time went from fifty-nine to sixty-five. So that was a, a saving measure, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the question now about the drivers who are contracted out, do we get their, they're being vetted by the third-party company and they get their own thing? But do they go through any of our trainings? Are they also being vetted by us?
They def, they definitely, their, their driver record and their criminal record go through our HR department. We have what we call a red light, green light. So they, our HR department looks at every one of their staff members, and we look at their criminal and driving record, and it goes through the same criteria as our, as our bus staff.
And some of those part-time, they commit some of their time to us and some of their time to the third party? Or are they committing themselves to Dearborn Schools or to, to the third party?
So if I understand your question correctly, the, the contracted bus staff?
Yes.
They, if they're doing our route, it's one hundred percent committed to just providing transportation for our, for our families and students.
Okay. So if a, a driver of ours who is hired by our district, do they take any other routes elsewhere with a company? Or can they be employed by both?
One of our drivers?
Either our drivers or one of their drivers can be, they be, they be employed by both institutions or not?
They technically could, but neither side really are in favor of doing that. Because they're afraid of losing a driver to the other party.
Correct. But are we doing any measures to, to kind of prevent them from taking our drivers?
That's why I'm glad to look at them because Mr. Sotres and, and a lot of, we, we are a lot, once a driver comes our department, because I, I hate, I'm just going to brag on Mr. Sotres and his staff. Because we are so efficient and it's such a pleasant area, place to work. And I got to give credit to you and the teachers and the parapros, everybody that they deal with. They like working in our system. So once we get them, we don't, we don't really have a problem with losing them. It's, it's outside of retirement. It's, it's getting them. It's recruiting them. It's getting them past that interview when they just, when they see how much we can pay per hour, how many hours we can offer them. Another factor that goes into what a contractor can offer, like, if you're out in our shows right now, Faster Horses, you would have seen three different contractors out there providing transportation. Those are all things that a contractor can provide to their bus staff that we can't because we're not a for hire, you know, transportation department.
Any other, anything else that you'd see the third parties offering that we don't offer?
I don't, but.
No, I, I don't either. It's just a little bit higher wage, but besides that, you know, they would love to work with us also.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I have a comment and a couple of questions. Eliminating routes, I'm just blown away that's even a conversation because let's go back twenty, twenty-five years when we started busing kids from one side of town to the other, just to keep schools open. You know, there was a decline in, say, a certain elementary school or a middle school. And I can, I remember my kids, we stood close to like Warren and Chase area. They were getting bussed off of Rita Smith. That's the exact, I mean, that's even passing up two other middle schools. So we made decisions for families to sit there and start a discussion about eliminating routes. Just want to make sure that was an option, you know, Mr. Wall mentioned. It's, it's not something that the board is discussing. At least I haven't heard anything about that. Outsourcing, I was so against that for a long time, for obvious reasons. We're not going to waste time and sit here and talk about the multiple reasons. When I hear that the other, when, okay, when you say, uh, third-party companies are paying a little bit higher, what does a little bit mean?
They usually stay about a dollar or two more per hour, and then they can awful, offer more work. So like a lot of the big vendors, like First Student, even National Trinity, we know Trinity real well, they have the coach service, too. So and those, during the summer, they can, some of their drivers, they can put them on a coach bus that goes across country, and they make really good money doing that. So it's just other small areas like that that they can offer that we can't.
Yeah, I mean, when, when I hear you say that, I sit there and start thinking cost versus safety. Anytime you have, you know, and most of our, a lot of our bus drivers live locally, so they know the kids, they know the neighborhoods, they know the teachers, they know the principal of every building. They greet the kids. Then, you know, once we have a third-party bus showing up at, you know, pickup, we don't know if it'll show up that morning. It's probably a different person every day. But you mentioned more work. I remember I talked this, talked this in oh-nine, and I've talked this a few times since we got updated. And I know what it comes down to. It comes down to money. So when you tell somebody you have to be available for eleven hours, but there's going to be a few hours in between where you need to go find something to do, why can't, I'm going to put it out one more time, why can't we look into? We're not going to go from, what is it, six or eight and all the way back to twenty-one overnight. Why can't we start looking at maybe a goal of two a year, creating full-time jobs? Meaning that we'll cross-train the employees. You know, we have work in cafeteria. We have, you know, there's other, there's other work that they can do. So if they come in at a certain hour in the morning, do their bus routes, then find a couple more hours for them to work and start building back up to full-time. Again, it doesn't have to be, we, we've been able to afford to create twenty-one full-time job. We would have the budget for it. But if we, as a district, think this is important, and I know we do, I mean, thank you, gentlemen, for all the work you do. I know it's not easy, every day, every morning, all the calls you get. I get that part. But we all value, you know, student safety. I remember Brian Wiston, God bless his soul, when he started having this discussion about outsourcing in the committee meeting, that, that discussion ended like in ten seconds. Well, you see where this has gone. It went from one point four to three point one now. I would like to start seeing it going the other way. Slowly, I get it. Build up our buses. I have yet to see if we create these full-time jobs, what is the cost? You know, if you show it to me, put it in writing, I'm like, oh, wow. I don't know what I was thinking that day. But if it's something we can do, I would love to, you know, hear from transportation. You know, a lot of the bus drivers I talked to walk, you know, and this thing about, about bus drivers, driving for their districts, who are we kidding? They do. They do all the time. Maybe we don't find out, maybe all the districts don't find out. But, you know, people can't, people got, you know, people taking jobs on the weekends. People taking jobs at night running, you know, athletes. They're, they're doing it. So not, and I fully respect what you just said there. Once we get them, we keep them because they're, they're happy to be here. But, uh, yeah, I would like to see, maybe, maybe this time, maybe let's put something together. What would it cost us if it's just two to three jobs a year moving forward for the next ten years when we can get back to where we were before? Again, safety first. You know, I think we can all agree on that. Thank you.
I have one more question. I know a citizen asked last time about the electric bus that we just purchased, if it could be dedicated to special ed. Is that a possibility?
Unfortunately, it can't because we didn't order it to be equipped with a, a wheelchair lift on it.
Is that something that we can consider for future buses, especially the electric buses?
It can, but it, it was, the reason why we did it is because it was already four hundred thousand, the electric to equip it with an air conditioner and, and a wheelchair lift, it was going to push it up to, you know, three thirty.
A little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something to consider, highly consider for future electric buses.
Yeah, there is EPA. I can let Mr. Sotres talk about that. He's been in the funding.
Yes, I've been working with the, with Holland, who we, Bluebird, who we buy our buses from. And we did fill out the application for electric buses. We have about twenty buses that are two thousand and ten or older, and we can apply. So we applied for, you know, ten to fifteen buses.
But the, the infrastructure needs to be there too as well.
Correct. Yes.
Of charging all of these buses, which is another huge cost that we need to look into.
And that's part of that EPA that funded.
Yep.
So I just, I just remember, one of the reasons, too, is the EPA funding for the one we ordered and future ones, it's not to expand your fleet. You have to replace a bus, you're replacing a, a bus with a light bus that's older. So we would have had eliminated one of our wheelchair lift buses if we were to got the electric bus, you know, as a special ed bus. The goal is for them to get old buses off the road and replace them with, uh, more efficient buses.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, you know, future is electric. And electric cars are, whether we like it or not, they're filling up the, the streets. And it's going to come to the same way of busing. We're going to be in ten years probably hearing the equilibrium of having probably equal number of buses that are being powered by diesel and powered by electric. But I would hope that we would like to, if the board agrees of, of looking into the infrastructure for charging electric buses, because one way or another, we will have to get there one day.
Trustee Watts?
I think, remind me, in the EPA grant application, wasn't there funding also for the charger itself?
Yes.
Okay. Because I remember, I think, well, I think I sent you that, um, that application because I couldn't remember if that was the one that, would it reimburse us for that?
Yeah. You know, we had our electricians, our district electricians look into it. We would have to upgrade our service to the building in order to improve our infrastructure.
It's a huge cost.
For multiple buses, yeah, right.
Trustee Petchakop?
Then a question just about, since we, segue to electric vehicles. And I had just read an article about somebody who bought a used electric vehicle that was an older model. And within six months, the battery was no longer any good. And because it was an older model, there wasn't a replacement battery for it. What's the lifespan of an electric vehicle and, and have they improved that so that we wouldn't be finding in five years, the battery dies and the bus is worthless?
So they tell us ten years, but there really hasn't been that many buses on the road for ten years that really proved.
They are electric.
And the next question that I've always asked is how much to replace it. And so just a giving idea. And that's why we, it's been hard for us to make the transition. Uh, this, this information is two years old, and it's going to change as more buses get out on the road. But two years ago, it would have cost a hundred thousand dollars to replace all the batteries on a bus.
That's what, what they found out. They bought this vehicle.
And at that time, we, like Mr. Wall mentioned, we could get a brand-new bus for about a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve back then. So that it, it's, it is the future. I just don't know if it's where.
When is the ti, when is the time? And actually, I, I want to add that at the NESTAB conference, the National. When is the ti- when is the time, and actually, I I wanna add that at the NESTA conference, the National School Board Association. There was a lot of talk on electric buses and I attended one of the sessions. And they mentioned something that is something to pay attention to about the grant situation, that these grants are not gonna stay there forever. So, if we don't, if you don't take advantage of these grants right now and you adopt to be a green school, right, and to be green-centric. And then those grants are not gonna be available, same with electric cars. I think Trustee Watts just walked out, but she she purchased her car and got a seventy-five hundred tax return rebate. That's a lot, so whatever, any grants possible, we can get, but they're gonna be requiring that you would have that infrastructure. So, the faster that we look into that infrastructure and the faster that we switch to. Electric is, I think, is better for the long term, rather than just stay focused on the current situation. And as far as batteries, obviously, that's even a hot topic with electric cars anywhere you go. Uh but there are warranties that usually the manufacturers will put up there and usually you have insurance and. And things that will ensure that the bus will run for its lifetime or projected lifetime, so they discuss that in detail. And I'm, I'll I'll be happy to share my notes from that board meet, from that uh conference.
And that's why we did purchase just one bus now and try to see how it works with us, you know, how it's gonna handle Michigan weather. A load of the things that we're gonna learn this is over the next year before we actually take the next step and kinda go further down that path.
One last question, Carter, is I here twenty-seven years, twenty-nine years?
Twenty-nine years, I started.
Thank you for your service.
I started as a sub-driver.
See, he was happy.
I have another question, uh we had had a discussion um about. Having our own bus attendants, um and I know that it was, we were looking into. Um getting some of those to agree to do those routes and and maybe pair of pros or other uh ones in the building. That are uh interested, how how is that coming along, are we getting a lot of interest in that program?
That is something, uh the DFSC oversees that, it's a union contract, so there's a lot of things that come into play. So, I know our HR department does a wonderful job, they've been discussing those things, but it's not something we can actually discuss in the public cuz it has to be bargained.
Okay, I got you.
So, always be careful, we really don't want people working more than eight hours unless we have to. You know, because, you know, there's the the that you get tired after so many hours and. You become less studious, so those are the things that we always worry about for liability's sake, but it's, we have been having those discussions.
Okay, because I know that uh our parents had uh voiced concerns and a preference to have our people. That they're familiar with on the bus, that's why I was asking that question.
I'll just add that the letter of agreement has been signed with the DFSC and we increased the compensation for the bus attendants. Um and we were able to recruit recruit quite a few for summertime, but that doesn't mean that those that recruited for summer are able to do it in the fall. Um but the additional compensation will make the recruitment a lot. A lot easier and more attractive for the fall, but the letter of agreement has been signed, so we can't say that public now.
Okay, good, thank you. What are the, Ms. Bazzie, what are the rates for entry-level um bus attendants and bus drivers?
Oh, thank you.
Fifteen dollars is the starting pay and it goes to nineteen dollars.
For the attendance, right?
Yep.
And then for the bus driver?
For the bus drivers.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty dollars is the starting.
And that could vary based on experience, correct?
Uh we have so many exemptions that we can use within the DFSC. And so if somebody comes to us with experience, then that would be one of the exemptions we would use. And I do wanted to say really huge thank you to Rick, I was happy you said that cuz I was sitting in my seat thinking like Rick's been through a lot, so. Much, much thanks to Rick and his team.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification.
So, I'll just add, so we're kind of at a critical juncture, right, gentlemen, if you can explain kinda what we need to do, I know there's been some discussions. If we were to renew the contract with the contractor to keep our buses going. But at the same token, we've committed to moving more of our own fleet over to special ed and looking to purchase those buses. In fact, there's some on the agenda today, we're looking to purchase uh used buses. Um but that'll take time if we, as we move in that direction. Um the other discussions that if we did do a renewal of the contract with the contractor. Um we've had some discussions as to as well, where um because they have the buses, could our drivers, we could negotiate with them. You know, whether or not we could have our drivers even driving some of their buses because they have the special ed buses that we don't have. That uh capability, even though we wanna build that moving forward. Um I, so I know we've made that commitment to to moving more of our uh our main driver fleet to um. You know, to to be on our, for the special ed department and we're gonna continue to do that, but it is gonna take time. From their perspective, when you guys have to spoken to me, and I know with Micah Salee is here, is that um we could potentially. You know, if we work with the contractor, we could, we could work, um especially if they were possibly even on our yard, you know, the buses. Those are other options we can look into, so you guys, we're kind of at a juncture where we we would have to kinda make a decision. If not today, very soon, right, um gentlemen?
So, yeah, so our summer program is about uh um and at the end of this week. And those that's, we need that in order so we know what our enrollment's gonna be for in all our schools for the next year. Right after that, student student services, what we call flip the enrollment to the new school year. Rick and his team start right away at starting a route, you know, for upcoming school year. And if we can have the vendor on board with us, it makes the process a lot better for our families.
And I just wanted to make a point cuz we were talking about the electric bus and how much it was costing. Um and a comment had been made when we first talked about this many months ago from a a community member. Uh about New York having had an electric vehicle that they paid way less for and they were kinda confused about the price. And you responded back to us, but this was before we put in the board follow-up section of our citizen participation. Is is that that bus happened to be a hybrid bus and it was not a full-size bus, and that's why there was such a. Price difference of what they were looking at comparing, so people have to be um careful, cautious with. Comparing things because it's not always apples to apples.
Right, you really have to read the whole articles and dive down and get the details.
And we were only allowed with that grant to get a complete electric vehicle, it had, it had all kinds of.
We could not have used that money to retrofit a bus, it was only to take an old bus off the road and replace it with a newer, similar electric bus.
Trustee Watts?
Do we know, um you had submitted for the grant, do we know um for what, ten to twelve additional buses, is that correct? For electric buses, or was that just the the grant that you submitted, we received one?
Correct, we received one in the grant so far, there's new, Rick, uh Mister Sotres has been working with our bus supplier. On the new grant, the new funds are gonna be put out.
And do we know what the deadline is for that or when we would hear back?
We would hear back in uh November.
Okay.
We had to apply by August nineteen.
Yep.
And we have applied um with Holland Bus Company, so as soon as he hears something, he he'll he'll email me and let me know everything.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So, um with the vendor that we had been working with, um you said the. Summer program's gonna end this week and then right away you have to start assigning routes. So, when do we need to know if this vendor's coming on, does that need something that needs to be addressed in this meeting?
Do it today, that would, that would be best case scenario for us.
Okay.
This is regarding purchase of the buses or?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, what are you talking about?
We have to make, we, it it has to be an action item, we have to vote on.
A new action item?
A a gender.
We we have one.
Vendor.
No one around, so we have one year left and with National Trails that we could extend them, it just takes a quick action item.
And there has been some concerns and we've um, we've discussed the concerns and um. At least to my view, I think that uh that vendor. Has done a better job than some of the previous vendors that we have and um. I'm inclined to go ahead with that additional year.
I can give you a little bit of information, so I've been in contact with owner, he is very committed to work with our district, he likes working for us. Um not to make excuses, he recognized that there were some problems in his office, specifically one manager. Who I can now go on a record, he allowed me to say that he that he he fired and let go. He brought on a new person, he's bringing, he's hiring, he brought on a new potential person and he brought him by for me to meet um last week, uh Mister Sotres. Um the person looks like a lot of experience uh in local and Detroit and around us in the transportation. I wanna say um about twenty years of experience in the transportation industry, so um he's willing, we. Uh like Doctor Malaico mentioned, uh any of the options that we mentioned to him about how we can work together, um he's been on board with. He's he's really committed to be able to continue to provide services for us and our families.
And I know that you had said before that he's been in conversations with you continuously um throughout the process and throughout everything. Um I think that we, am I wrong in believing that we would be one of the largest contracts?
We would be.
We would be?
Yes.
And so they do pay special attention to us.
They do, correct.
Any other questions?
I I I wanna clarify on what Trustee Petchikoff was asking, was this an agenda item that we have today because I?
No, we pulled it off of the last.
That's what I'm saying, so we don't, do we have it and we don't have it currently on the agenda.
But he, but I I believe Mister Andrews is asking, could we, I mean, we can make a, make a motion.
Correct.
And I believe that's what you were asking for, yes.
To extend the contract by one year.
Right.
Is it extend or renew, does it matter what it would say?
Would it be the same verbiage as last month's, what we polled?
You sent language to Joanne and I have it.
Yeah, I I shared some language, I didn't know if it was available.
I I can tell you what the recommended action says if you would like. Uh move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to renew a contract not to exceed. Three million two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to National Trails to provide supplemental and special education. School bus transportation for the twenty twenty-two summer and twenty twenty-two twenty-three school year.
And without renewal of that contract, we would have to cut back on general education buses.
If we renewed that, we would not be.
I said without renewal, we would have to.
Correct, we'd have to, we'd have to entertain it and look at it, yes.
Okay, but chances are it would be a reality.
Yeah, we'd have to go through and relook at the whole program and how we offer it, who we have to go to a fourth tier, there could be a lot of different things we had to start the discussion on. To be able to offer services.
Okay.
The current, I mean, there is no current contract. Expired.
Correct, it was, we did a three-year potential, but we've been doing it year by year. So, we've got two out of the three years, so we have an opportunity for the third year, but there's no, no automatic renewal in this contract.
This would be a one-year.
One-year contract only.
And we're gonna get to work planning for.
Yeah, and this would be the last year on the last bid that we put out on this contract, so we, no matter what, we'd have to put it out for bid for the. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, so, I mean, even though this is gonna be a tough one, I would go ahead and uh. Put the motion on the table, Joanne, if you wanna read it again, please.
Move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to renew a contract not to exceed three million two hundred fifty-five. Thousand dollars to National Trails Incorporated to provide supplemental and special education school bus transportation. For the two thousand twenty-two summer and two thousand twenty-two twenty-three school year.
Motion's on the table.
I'd support it.
I have a motion by Trustee Barry and a support by uh Trustee Thorpe, any further discussion and further questions? Yep.
Yeah, I mean, earlier in the year, I was getting phone calls about bussing, buses running late. And I understand all the reasons, but I was, I wasn't getting calls from, you know, parents of, you know. Their their kids on the bus, getting calls from kids sitting in the classroom, waiting for the other kids to show up so we can start class. So, if the bus is running twenty minutes or a half hour late, that's fifteen students sitting there doing nothing. Add that, add those numbers up, how much instructional time is lost, so, like I said. It's very, very tough for me to go and put that motion, but at this point, I I don't think we have another option. Cuz you start canceling routes, it's gonna create chaos in the district. Well, we we we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold you to what you said today, we're gonna start working together moving forward to turn this. No pun intended, well, pun intended, to turn this bus around, but uh this is very, very, I mean, very, very serious subject in Dearborn. Uh again, parents have bought houses because they wanted their kids to go to a certain school, then all of a sudden. The school board, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, as recent as a few years ago, started making changes. Making decisions for them where their kids are gonna go to what school, not everybody can just pick up and move overnight, some people can, but most people can't, so. Uh I do, I am gonna ask for a follow-up on this.
Yeah, what what I would like to do is on a monthly basis, maybe the last, you know, report up to the board, have a little matrix. So, you can see, you know, how many people have applied, how many we've hired, the number of buses, the routes, so just a little matrix. So, you see that information on a month-by-month basis, you can see the progression.
Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe?
So, the action item states the summer of twenty twenty-two, which we've just finished, right? It is supposed to be twenty-two, not the summer of twenty-three?
That's correct, it uh, we, we were able to, working with HR, um we were able to. Do everything in-house this summer, but we had it on there just in case, cuz there were, we didn't know when this action item would be possibly coming to the board. And we wanted to have a language in there in case we could get some relief during the summer school.
So, we actually didn't use them.
We didn't, so I'm assuming that we, while we approved up to a certain amount, we should be able to come in less because we didn't use them this summer.
For full transparency, we did, we did use a few of their drivers to come drive our buses for full transparency.
Okay, they were driving our buses, not theirs, alright, thanks.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Justy Mose.
The recommendations that we had after we had that closed session from the company. Um are those communicated to the vendor?
Yes, and he's fully on board, everything that uh suggestions that we've taken from him, he said absolutely, he'd be willing, he he wants to work for us. And continue to provide his services. He was actually, between us, us supplying the bus attendants would be a relief to him. Cuz even they have, even they have a hard time recruiting bus attendants.
Yeah, I I mean, any employer right now has a hard time hiring anybody because of a lot of things, but. Um as far as the bus attendants being attended or being there. Um for our general ed, not specialized, I know specialized were required to have bus attendant every bus, correct?
It depends on the student's IEP, if there's a medical condition, absolutely one hundred percent. Um internally in the office, if there's a wheelchair, it's not by law, but we try to. But because of recruiting, it's been so hard, if a bus only has one wheelchair, we may run a bus without a bus attendant for a day. But we try our best to try to put a a bus attendant on, um so those are the two criterias, IEPs, medical, and if it has a wheelchair.
And we don't have bus attendants on general ed buses.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, no further discussion, we have a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosep?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, Chair McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I make one comment too?
Yes, please.
Appreciate the presentation, the board, and Trustee Barry, your idea that you brought for, we did have some discussions with the union a while back. But I'm gonna ask them to go back and talk about, um you know, can we do that with the full-time and and I know Nada's here and. Mason right now, we wanna make sure we're talking to Alan, see if that, those kind of options are possible to attract more people, you know. To make more money throughout the day, so let's make sure we put that on the agenda.
We have discussed it in the past.
We we've had discussions.
I was gonna ask under, later on, under request for information, I would like to see, what is the additional cost? Going, you know, to creating that full-time position, is it twenty thousand, is it forty thousand, is it higher? I would like to see that, then maybe we can.